Eleven oh one AM, we are here on September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four, for a regular meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. To start, if you can silence cell phones, to start with a pledge of allegiance and then review the agenda. A pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the very power of our religious stance on our nation, on its republic, and in defense of all that they would need to address this fraud. I think we had noticed that the first agenda item on the Arkansas River Community Preserve Management Plan needs to be moved to a subsequent meeting, but any other changes from commissioners or staff from the posted agenda items? I think we're good to go on everything else.
Yep.
Okay, so look for a motion to approve the agenda with that one removal of agenda item number one?
So moved.
Second? Great.
No more for me?
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, great, agenda is approved with that one removal. Any commissioner update?
Um, I just want to mention the September twenty first, Jackie, is that correct, the workshops happening?
It has been canceled because I was the only one to sign out.
Okay, well, I want to mention the workshops that Jackie's working to get, will there be other ones scheduled?
They have offered to do it virtually, and I have encouraged them to change their registration. They had, you had to call in and speak to somebody, which is super helpful, especially the Fair Housing Fair. What would be nice to, and people just have access to it.
Yeah.
Register, so they may do it online. I think the prices are worthwhile, and we'll see, there's just been a lot of outreach with it recently, so we'll see if we get better numbers calling into them.
Okay, and this is workshops for housing and financial health and all things to prepare folks for becoming eligible and learning more about the housing projects between the city and the county and just working to, toward homeownership and we're just keeping along with the project. Reach, reach out to you, Jackie, or.
I think in these half, these classes specifically were a three-part workshop, they had a component dealing with fraud and how to avoid being victimized by fraud. They had a component, which I think would be super helpful for renters and landlords and understanding what the current laws are. Get help with, and final pieces of how to make a budget and work on credit and things like that. So I think they're very worthwhile workshops, so we'll try and put them.
Jackie, has that lottery been finalized yet? Okay, thanks. Uh, nothing for me? Okay, then, a public comment for items not on the agenda, please?
Hi, I'm Jane Harrelson, and I live at one seventy-two Rafferty Drive. Seventeen million, that was no surprise for a new build for a recreation center, aquatic center. As back in two thousand and twenty, the Lake County Aquatic Center audit done by Asenza Architecture. For a new aquatic center, they said it would be ten to thirteen million, and it has been four years, over four years. And it's been almost four years since we've had a public pool in this community. And our existing aquatic center that sits empty, it has the capacity to serve over two hundred and seventy-five people at a time. The footprint allows for a variety of activities to take place at the same time. There were swimming lessons, diving lessons, aqua exercise, lap swimming, short course races, aqua basketball, aqua volleyball, climbing wall, dive-in movies, kayak classes, and rehabilitation. Those were all activities enjoyed by all of us. The design for a new build presented last week at the work session claimed to meet all community members' needs as to that survey done by O L C and Councilman Hunziker. We don't need a new build to meet needs, we can incorporate those needs that our existing center doesn't address by expanding or using what we have. So we, the taxpayers, we own that building, we own that pool. I have the contract in my hand from nineteen seventy-four. It says, whereas the board has made available the sum of two hundred thousand dollars to defray the cost of construction of the swimming pool, and whereas it has heretofore been agreed in principle that in consideration thereof, the swimming pool and gym facilities will be made available to all the residents of Lake County. Then the taxpayers paid off that school bond issue. So we own that pool, we own that school, we paid for it. Forty-five thousand dollars worth of work was done in two thousand and twenty-one for required upgrades that brought the mechanical room of the pool up to code. The aquatic center is shovel-ready for renovation. Please, let's take care of what we have and operate facilities to their full potential. If anybody would like an e-copy of this, I'm happy to send it to them.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Okay?
Thanks, Tim Bass who lives at six oh seven and a half Harrison.
And, sorry, you have to, a couple of different hats, could you say which?
I'm here with my advocates, Adam.
Excellent.
Thank you. I'm excited about the discussion around the RFP for Litech Housing today. Leadville and Kirby does not have a thriving rental market. We have a stagnant and expensive rental market. Turnover is rare, predictions are common, and I'm not surprised by the lack of it. A thriving rental market is what leads to homeownership. People who are first-time homebuyers are currently renters. If we do not have a thriving rental market here, the only people who will be able to move into first-time ownership or from elsewhere. So a thriving rental market means that people are able to rent and put away money for a down payment. With, you know, area median rents at sixteen, eighteen hundred dollars for a one-bedroom, most of our, you know, working folks here just cannot afford to even pay their rent, much less suck away money for a down payment. So I'm excited about the discussion. I have, the advocates have some interests that I'd like to just go ahead and state now. One is that there'd be P S H set-asides, whatever would be most advantageous to a developer. The discussion with two developers that I've had that I've been working with for different projects indicate that permanent supportive housing set-asides are more advantageous to the developer because they result in more tax credits that then the developer can sell on the open market. Anywhere from ten to fifteen, depending how the project, how big the project would be. As far as the, so I've been a part of some discussions and I've heard that we're going to be discussing a rather large project. So I don't know what the current thinking is around how many of those units would be just market rate units. You know, a bunch of market rate units will still help the rental market and will bring the prices down. But how many of those units will be at, for low income? And how we define low income? We find that the current discussions around affordable housing are not affordable. Anything over a hundred percent A M I is by definition not affordable, that's above average. So we would like to see ideally thirty to eighty percent of A M I for about half of the units of any new project. Of course, those are just our, our dreams, and we're aware that realities of developments and competitive bids, you know, are gonna make other realities, sort of, sort of emphasize other realities, and that's the way it is. But just wanted to state, like, sort of our ideal dream large rental project. The fact that we are finally focusing on rental units here, to me, is just fantastic. I think you're all aware of the needs assessment, that one of the findings was that maybe two hundred and forty rental units just to stabilize the market right now, not supply for the future. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Anyone on Zoom wish to make public comment? Hearing none? Okay, then, great, thank you for those comments. We'll move on to the, well, the second agenda item, but first for today, discussing consideration of a bid award for the earthwork on West Third and West Sixth Streets, specifically lots twenty-five through thirty-two, block thirty-nine, Stevens and Leiter subdivision, and lots one through sixteen, block twenty-one, Stevens and Leiter subdivision, and authorizing the county manager to execute a final contract with the selected firm pending the county attorney's final review. Michael Yurman, you have the lead on this agenda item.
Yes, thank you. Just a real first quick update, some good news on the financial side of things as far as the dollar grant is concerned. After today's, after this grading bid award, we are only awaiting one last invoice for the infrastructure needed for the infill sites, which is gas. I had a conversation with Excel Energy that it should be in about the twenty K range. So we are on budget for the utility work for the two infill sites, which is great news. I was pretty concerned that the Excel energy costs with the transformer costs was going to push us well over the budget. But we actually are in fact on budget, and we will be able to be ready for groundbreaking for the forced sale stuff this coming spring with this award. So we did receive two awards.
Michael, can you, I'm sorry, can you turn that?
Yeah, sir, okay. Sorry, you guys having, can you hear me now?
Try again.
Try that.
Can you guys hear me better now?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so you got the good news, we're on budget. Hear that?
Got it.
That was, that was, that was the gist of the first spiel there. Today, we're recommending for this agenda item, we received two bids. Our vertical construction contractor did bid on this, as well as five B excavation and construction. Five B excavation and construction was about twenty-five thousand dollars lower. So we are gonna recommend, just based on your RFP principles, to make a motion to award five B excavation and construction. The contract, and one thing I will point out is that the amount that you're seeing of ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents is subject to change. The reason for that is that we don't have hard bids on this because it's based on quantity removal. So if we determine through the process of the remediation and testing, that more dirt has to go out. There, they have a set, set price per quantity of, of dump truck loads that they would take off-site, that they would charge us. But their quantities and their, and their bid is compliant with your procedures, and they are, they are substantially lower than the vertical construction. Unfortunately for that, there's going to require some extra funding on our end, but nothing that we can't handle for the, to ensure that we, we award to the lowest bidder.
Michael, can you say the names, or the recommended name again? Because we don't, I don't, that was in the original.
It is five, five B excavation and construction.
Okay, five B as in boy?
Yep.
Or Bravo, or?
Um, Michael, was the, are the two, well, I just want to say the two, the two that submitted bids were five B excavating and construction and Farrington Construction Management, ALC?
Correct.
Okay, and Farrington is without a burger, you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, did we communicate with them at all to see if they could also match that, since they're mobilizing and find some?
Unfortunately, we, we did ask and get some clarification on their bid, but they were, again, you know, almost a quarter, twenty-five, twenty percent higher. If they were within the ten percent range, I think it would be some, you know, there could be some additional consideration here. But because we're using state dollars for this, we have to, we have to abide by, you know, by your principles of selection. So given that, given the variance in costs, I think we need to do this for the five B.
Is there a note to exceed on that five B proposal?
There isn't, and I don't suggest we do that because as we, as we dig down, we don't know if we're gonna exceed any other contamination. So it's, it's, I don't anticipate it, but, you know, it is a quantity-based, based proposal. So we just need to get the site remediated to the level where we're developing housing on it. So the, the advantage we have on this contract where, again, I'm, I'm not as concerned about a massive cost increase is that the repository is controlled by the county, which would be the largest expense for the developer, sorry, for the, for five B because of fees, so we have quite a bit of control on, on that.
Great. And they will, they intend to use, we have offered, and that's the plan, to use our local repositories?
It is.
Talon? Oh, for a motion to approve the award to five B excavating and construction, as they are the low, considering considerable low bidder and the, and the compliant bid.
So moved?
Second? Great, any other questions or comments?
Uh, I do have another question, is that work gonna be done by the end of this season, Michael? I'm sorry, I think you probably said that.
Yes.
Great, okay, so we'll have a pretty swift thumb on the pulse of expenses and if they're gonna be within budget?
Yeah, and we're, as we sit today, I'm looking at, including the increase in all the TAP fees, as well as the master planning costs. We're somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty in the good still. There's some, like I said, sorry?
When are you gonna start this work, Michael?
Uh, as soon as Tim signs the contract.
Okay.
It is out of the right of way, so it's not, it is out of the right of way, so it's not subject to the city's moratorium on digging. So it's on our property, so it's not as time-sensitive as the sewer or the.
I think this is saying where they're at, and yet it kind of moves.
Um, can we, can I amend my motion to include authorizing the manager to sign and execute the contracts pending legal, final legal review?
Yes.
I don't have anything further.
Okay, so great, so with that friendly amendment authorized, signature, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, great, thanks for moving this along, it's great that we're still in this current construction season. The next five minutes. Yep.
I, I think we have a, we have a, we're looking like we have a window here, so, knock on wood. It'll probably snow on my wedding, which is October fifth, so.
Yeah.
That's, that's Murphy's Law for me.
Michael, any other closing comments on, on the earthworks topic?
No.
Okay, great, then we can move on to the RFP for low-income housing tax credit, or Litech, our project for Harrison Park.
Thanks, so I want to clarify one important note on this is that while the, the title is for Litech, I don't want to lose track that this is a master planning process, and it's not just for a low-income housing tax credit development only. It also involves public uses, working with the school district, because obviously we want to be good neighbors. It includes the master planning for the circulation and the traffic study for the site. So there's a lot more to it than just a low-income housing tax credit project. However, as I think was stated during the public comment very eloquently, the needs assessment pointed a very big arrow at a need for sixty percent A M I housing or less for rental. And that needs assessment stirred quite a few Litech developers to reach out to me directly, or I know that, that the B O C C also received some communications. What that tells you is that the Litech community, which is a very competitive development process, is seeing that there's a very viable project in Lake County in the next three years, and that there is a willingness to participate in some of the planning necessary to get there. What this RFP will do is between now and February, is get the Harrison Ballfield Master Plan, or Harrison Park Master Plan completed, showing layouts for housing for additional public uses, as well as any additional uses that we might negotiate with the school district for additional space needs if needed, I'm not saying that that is. But it, it will get us to the point where we have engineer, preliminary engineering and cost estimates that when this project, when this, when this process ends, we will have a sketch P U D plan to present to the B O C C and the Planning Commission that would then allow us to go after funding. But I want to ensure that everyone understands that's the stop. In February, we have a concept master plan, we have engineer cost estimates for the infrastructure needed for the site, we have a traffic study, and we have basically the preliminary engineering we need to then go after additional state funding for the infrastructure. There's gonna be a gap in timing because the infrastructure needs for this site are so big that that, that, that gap is, is too large for a Litech developer to simply step in and put in themselves. So what this process allows the future B O C C to do is to either continue on with the selected development group or to completely reissue an RFP. The, the group that works through this RFP will be made whole through the hundred and fifty thousand plus forty thousand dollars in the budget for traffic study. So we will have a situation in which the B O C C can either, through this RFP process, which allows, to continue on with dual applications for infrastructure and an eventual CHAFA Litech application, or to basically take the master plan and the documents that are there, pay, pay the fee, which they will get regardless for the master planning, and then the county at the time can either solicit a new, a new RFP for strictly the Litech development piece of the master plan, or to continue on. The other thing that this, that this does is it also puts the, a future B O C C in a position to negotiate public uses with the Litech developer. And depending on what kind of, of uses come out of the master planning process, Park, they, most Litech centers have a community center-type aspect to it. All of that could be part of this, as well as the last big important piece that I will add, is that Litech developers are kind of the, the cram of the crop as it relates to actually pulling off development and, and construction services. And the reason I say that is because the tax credit award that they receive has very tight timeframes in which they are required to perform. And if they fail to perform, they will basically be out of the Litech game for ten to twenty years. So there's a lot of sophistication that comes with these development firms. They also typically have in-house engineering, architectural services, et cetera. This RFP does not preclude a Litech developer from working with a civil engineer firm as part of their team, or something along those lines, as well as any planning or architecture firms. So that certainly, as we get proposals in, and we see what the development teams look like, the B O C C can certainly weigh that, as well as looking at their past projects as part of the selection process. But to be clear, that the way this, the way I see, in a perfect world, the way I see this, this evolving is we go through the master planning process, we have a sketch plan application that is presented by, by end of March, which would wrap up a dollar grant, and at that point, the, we have, we, the county, has in our possession cost engineered estimates, preliminary layouts for the utility infrastructure, parcel layouts showing where housing, different housing would be. This site can certainly absorb not just a Litech project, but additional homeownership opportunities. You know, I, I heard the permanent supportive housing component, which I think is a great idea to be part of the overall housing continuum conversation that will occur during the master planning process, as well as public uses, trails, and connectivity. The only other last thing I will add that between now and February, that's pretty important, is that this whole master plan process does require us to obtain an easement through the strip of land that the school district owns on the west side of their, of the elementary school there. Without that, without a twenty-foot easement, at least along the strip between the parking lot north, this, we're not able to serve this site without, without, without that sewer easement. So hopefully, that is part of the master planning process, is to identify where that easement location would be, so that the county has the ability to negotiate that, to ensure that we can serve the site with the, with the necessary, not just sewer, but water, electric, gas, infrastructure that might be needed. But then, taking a step back on process, we wrap this up in February, we have cost estimates, we have engineering, we have a sketch plan and a site layout. At that point, we would be able to potentially use the congressional spending funding that we have currently sitting with HUD and, and that as a potential match for an infrastructure grant, hopefully through the state, to put in the phase one infrastructure. That process would probably play out between the early stages of the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-five through the last quarter of two thousand and twenty-five, and probably first quarter of two thousand and twenty-six to actually do the physical installation of infrastructure. When the Litech application is due, then most likely, when we would have our first stab at actually going for funding for, for CHAFA, for the actual nine percent deal, would be February two thousand and twenty-six. At that point, a developer, if we selected, or a future developer that would be selected, would have to have gone through the county's P U D process, the remaining steps of preliminary and final plat, as well as major subdivision, to follow your process, so they have site control and zoning by February two thousand and twenty-six. So I think the first step is master plan the site, second step is check, case, structure funding, third step is, is final zoning controls, and the final step is a actual CHAFA application in February two thousand and twenty-six. With that, I'll entertain questions, I'm sure they're.
I just had one comment, I, I, or to start, I, I think we should keep referring to this as the Harrison Park Master Plan. I know we're all super excited about Litech and the interest from Litech developers, and understand what benefits that can bring, but I think that's gonna, I'm just gonna send a signal that we're further ahead in this than we are. So I, I would just recommend that we, like, we call this RFP that will get to, I'm giving staff direction on, you know, continue to call it the Harrison Park Master Plan. That was it for me.
So literally changing the title of the RFP and removing the Litech and just having Litech in, included in the body there?
I mean, just given, like, like, you know, I mean, again, it's great that that's seeming like a reality that we're going to engage in in the future, but there's a lot more in the RFP than just the Litech. So I think, I think putting, I think calling it, I think having Litech in the title, and especially if we only call it Litech, is just gonna be, I, I just think it's a better title to call it the Harrison Park Master Plan because that's, because it is anticipating a lot of different things that are gonna be considered beyond just the Litech project, which, you know, is just one of the potential phases.
Um, I wonder what Michael's perspective is on that, just on his experience in, like, flagging that for Litech-specific developers, and it's not just that, that project, but.
I mean, to do that, I'm not talking about taking it out, I'm not talking about taking Litech out of the RFP. It's just simply the title for the optics of it for the community, because I think, at least for me, like, I'll. It's just simply the title for the optics of it for the community, because I think at least for me, like a. I would say all of the feedback I have gotten is concern about, you know, some like. Twenty-story nineteen seventies project for poor people, that's, I mean, just repeating words. Like, so I think it is really important.
There's a stigma attached.
Yeah.
Anytime you talk about low income, there's a stigma attached to that and people have visions of.
Yeah.
Cabrini Green and and inner city government pro- housing projects and high crime.
And 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 then we're gonna like chock a block this into that whole site, but that's just not the plan. So I just, again, I just think for the optics of it and rolling this out to the community, I think continuing to call it the whole Harrison Park Master Plan. Is is just gonna send a better signal from the get-go.
And even then, you're still gonna get pushback.
Oh, sure, yeah. But I think if, I mean, again, it it it, I agree with how it's it's just simply the optics and like the stigma, like if we if we have in the title. Low income housing, I can just already hear the like, see, I told you, that's what they're doing, you know?
Say term permanent supportive housing, you're gonna get the same reaction.
So.
I think, I think that's that that suggestion is easy to accommodate and what I will, the only thing I will add to that is. While I while I hear the concern, the one thing we need to be paying attention to is that though, that the. The light tech developers expertise that they bring to being able to assist with other community needs. Uh, is a huge um portion of the of the discussion of how they structure their their finance model. With the tax credit models, so I agree with you, um, I already made that change. Um, and we'll just keep it as an embedded part of the bigger process. And if you read through the the RFP, we are very, very much talking about the other uses that will be part of the site. Um, and I also think that, you know, the stigma attached to low income housing tax credits. Can be overcome with a with a developer who knows how those projects actually are built and what they will look like. And being able to show examples in other rural uh resort communities that they've built. Uh, that make, you know, that can, that 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 this process needs to have as part of it. Which is showing elevation, showing showing design examples of what these houses will look like and. Being very mindful of the neighbors and site corridors and these types of things.
Okay, well, then speaking of that then, so. Um, the agenda and the background memo for us, the background memo says staff direction is the action. Um, which I think is where we're at, like not where the agenda says a decision, I mean, I think the direction is to. Prepare the RFP, we don't have the RFP in this packet.
Ask Jackie if she got it, she has it, I forwarded it to you guys.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so I think what we would look for is if we would look to try to post this RFP by uh September twentieth. And so we can make sure that you each of the B O C C members sees it. And then incorporate any of your feedback, uh, Jackie, I'll send you, I'll send an updated uh before I leave today. I'll send an update with the comments I've already just received today. I'll send that over to you, Jackie, that way you can uh get that to the B O C C before the twentieth, before we post. And then we'd be happy to incorporate any comments uh prior to posting the RFP.
Great, okay, that's good for me. I see nodding.
Yeah, um, Michael, I I don't see like, I see some recreation outdoor amenities on. And connectivity listed in here, I don't see any mention of childcare. Um, is that something that you would call out specifically or we just leave that?
Uh, it's in there as public uses, but I will put in, um, I will put in right there. I have a spot for that and then that's a good comment, I will put that in as one of the uses.
Okay.
That's easy, easily done.
And then just for some other background in in your experience on something like a twelve acre parcel with a light tech project, I mean. The developer, I I think you did a great overview earlier, but the developer would take that twelve acres and it. What, I mean, in your experience, does it depend on what the jurisdiction would like to see as far as. Light tech units and or.
Yeah, so.
I mean, I I think this is unfair question to ask you, but like what percentage of the land, you know, like is that pro- is a light tech. Development and then mixed with any other um market or other AMI. Like sales or rentals so that that project pencils out.
Yeah, no, there's actually, that's a great question and it's actually a pretty simple formula. It's uh every one acre is about twenty-four units for a light tech project. So your needs assessment, I mean, as was pointed out, two hundred and forty, that's not all sixty percent or less. But you have a a need of almost a hundred and twenty sixty percent AMI or less units in your community right now. Now, what will happen is you won't be, the light tech developer will never be allowed by CHAFA to just build a hundred percent of the need. They typically are capped at around fifty percent because it has to lease up uh within the first three months of of what they're doing. So at maximum, you may see a sixty unit, but I think for the for the for the size of Lake County where you're typically seeing. Projects come in at are between about thirty-four and fifty-four units of housing, so. If on the high end, at on the low end, it's about a two acre site, on the high end, it's a three and a half acre site. Um, of all that land, and to be real clear on this. The idea of how I'm trying to set this up is this sets the county up. Uh, at the end of this process in which the developer has created separate parcels and parceled out. The entire, the entirety of of the Harrison Park. Uh, and they are in no way going to be entitled to any of the land that they're that they that they would not be building on. But the county would be in in the benefit of the county is that you would be getting the land subdivided. With utilities in front of it, then the final piece I'll add is that. The reason I think that this project has a real high success rate is that the county is in a very strong negotiating. Negotiating position as well as putting forward a very good application to CHAFA. Because you A are going to be able to utilize and leverage the land in the negotiation. As well as if we are successful in getting a grant from the state for infrastructure. That goes into the developer's pro forma, which shows a heavy local investment, which will elevate their application even further. Um, beyond the, you know, the the market demand that that your community also shows, which is a huge strength, so. I think the the point of this process is by the end of February, to be able to have you in a position to negotiate. The next steps with either sticking with the current uh potential developer, that that partnership that comes in through this process. Or saying, hey, we want to take a step back, here's our list of demands, we're gonna put it back out to the the development community who's coming. Um, the last thing I'll also say is that these developers that build these types of projects. They have the, most of them have the ability to do utility infrastructure. They have the ability to buy down costs for a public facility even. So if there is any kind of public uses or whatnot, when they're mobilized, they're able to. Were able to take advantage of the climbing of scale uh with with their labor and their construction force.
So they don't necessarily have the right to the rest of the land, but and so that doesn't, that's not inherent in the development plan. Unless we choose the same developer?
Correct, yeah, what what I did, what I put in here, what I, when you read the RFP, I I gave, I did make sure I put in. Two options for the B O C C as far as negotiating. One is to you for for this competitive process, the future B O C C may continue on because. If if the relationship is going well with the selected development partnership. Or you reserve the right to reissue this for the light tech development piece. Uh, i- if you want to further negotiate that uh through a separate RFP. So there's, there's two points at the end of February, um, and actually I'll tell you, really, when the, when that decision will be made. Is pending an infrastructure award, again, because I know that hurdle is just too large for any one developer to take on themselves. It's gonna require, it's gonna require the county in uh as a partner in a dollar grant. Uh, to assist with that backbone infrastructure.
So we give uh direction to move forward to the posting of the RFP? And if uh. Uh, with any other comments and feedback that we have to be submitted before September twentieth?
Yeah.
Okay, um.
That's good.
Okay, I'll move to approve uh the posting of the RFP.
Just hang on before you make that motion, uh Jenny, did you want to comment on the RFP?
Um, yeah, hi, Jenny Abbott, um, advocate to Lake County, former five-year board member of Bright Start Learning Center. Um, I just wanted to speak up as a former board member of Bright Start when I heard the comment about childcare. Um, when there were conversations about including childcare facilities in. Government entities primarily around the justice center conversations. Um, Bright Start made it very, very clear to the elected officials that staffing was a continuous problem at Bright Start. And it was our strong desire for the county not to create a competitive entity when we were having trouble staffing. The entity that we did have that was causing the center to be shut down at times, just for having lack of people. Um, I would strongly suggest that you guys reach out to Lake County Bill of Generation and consult with their childcare coalition. Uh, before creating a competitive uh childcare facility. And this is a side comment, thank you.
Jenny, I understand, I think there's an option to have Bright Start move into that new facility, not as a competitor, but as a long-term home for Bright Start.
Right, I think that's at the forefront of the thoughts.
Great, that's awesome, that's nice to hear, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks Jenny. Uh, Sarah.
Michael, did you just remove the li- light tech acronym there from that title? So the only change, yes, okay.
I added, I added the childcare, um, I will add in just from that comment as part of the. Um, I will add Bright Start as part of the focus groups. Um, that makes sure it's in there, is it bright? Words, Bright Start?
Start, yeah.
And also, Lake County Bill of Generation has a childcare coalition that's paying super close attention to all issues around childcare right now.
Okay, I'll put Bright Start slash Lake County Bill of Generation.
So we're just talking about building a childcare facility, not providing childcare services?
Correct. Correct.
Right, right.
Alright, okay.
And that's.
And I think it's more, just to be real clear, this master plan process is really targeted to creating a parcel for a future use. Right, uh, I don't think it in any way obligates, a- a- again, it's 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 creating. It's creating master plan parcels around the whole site where these types of uses could eventually locate.
Right.
And just sort of towards where I did meet with the executive director of Build a Generation yesterday and discuss this RFP and the childcare piece to it.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I know, thank you. Um, okay, uh, so I'll move to approve the posting of the RFP for the Lake County Development Partnership at Harrison. Avenue for the Harrison Park Master Plan, um, on September twentieth.
Second your motion.
Well, I was, I was, um, yeah, no, no, okay, that's it, that's it, that's it.
That's it?
Yes, you're right, second, okay.
Second, I hear the second, alright, great.
I think the discussion is just, yeah, add other comments, but I think it, yeah.
Yeah, to reflect the discussion we had here and any further comments you received for the posting date, so. Okay, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Um, so that direction is approved. Thanks for moving along, everyone, Michael, Jackie, everyone involved. Um, discussion consideration of a bid award for a consultant to assist in completing the required. Uh, NEPA application through the Department of Housing and Urban Development uh for the Harrison Park site. And authorizing the county manager to execute a final contract with the selected firm pending the county attorney's final, attorney's final review. Jackie.
Okay, so I'm very excited to um speak to the fact that we have three proposals. Uh, for this RFP, uh, we've had the proposals reviewed within the community planning and development staff as as well as Michael. Uh, they're my role planner, um, and we have a very clear, I think, um. Uh, proposal that should be considered. Uh, Pinion Environmental Inc. um is a local, uh, they're in Colorado, their headquarters are in Colorado organization. Um, they came um in the more in terms of pricing, um, at twenty-four thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars. And just to let you know, um, the reason we're pursuing um this technical assistance. Is the HUD funding that we received requires that we have a national uh environmental policy act, a NEPA application. Um, to happen first on the site, so this would be for the Harrison property. And um, we will need this expert um to help us navigate this process. And go through this care system that makes it not easy. Um, and so these applicants, um, while I think, um, we have two very strong. Um, proposals, um, the other proposal proposed by. Um, Headway Environmental uh is significantly higher in cost, um, they are not local. And then the third proposal that we received, um, kind of missed the mark in our proposal. Didn't really address the RFP concerns, uh, and so I think that staff would highly recommend. Pinion, I did check references, um, and was able to confirm that they were, they performed. Um, as directed and were very helpful in making sure that the folks got the funding that they were seeking. Um, I did reach out to Pinion, um, and let them know that we have the experience in this process and we're gonna require. Quite good handholding to get through it, uh, but they indicated that would be no issue and that they anticipate that their estimate of twenty-four thousand. One hundred and seventy-three dollars is a conservative number and it could potentially be lower than that because we've already had some environmental. Reporting down on the site, um, so that is what I would like to um put before you say. Also, like I said, another consideration is that the HUD funding will pay for this, um, so that is.
Oh, great.
We can submit a reimbursement for this study, so it's not gonna come out of HUD funds.
That is excellent. That is not always the case for federal funds.
Yeah, it was, even our um introductory meeting, um, with HUD was very intimidating, so it would be great to have. A local organization that we can call part of our list of their software.
Yeah.
And Jackie, the other, we got three total?
Got three.
From Civitas, it looks like?
Mm-hmm.
And Headway Art and Headway?
Yes.
Okay, and Pinion, okay.
Headway's out of Arizona, they have some local um proposals, it's like, um, they had a robust proposal. And Civitas is out of South Carolina and, um, they're not. They they had some, it looked like they had not actually corrected some of their, uh, proposal. And it talked about training and things like that.
Little unrevealed, cut and paste, perhaps? Okay, I don't have any further questions?
Um, I don't, well, I I've, you know, we have so much documentation already on this. Is that part of why the cost might be so low because we've shared, you know, we know that we have. Whatever portion of the full assessment that's going to be.
We got the, so they they submitted their proposal, um, and then we shared with them, um, their phase one, phase two. Um, and so the proposal that we had for twenty-four thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars from Pinion. Um, might be, they said it's kind of nuanced because it just really depends, uh, and every, every application is different.
Okay.
But they said your estimates are typically conservative and there might be, um, you know, consideration for that previously executed phase one.
Great.
To lower the cost even more.
Great, okay, thanks.
So look for a motion to approve the award of the. So look for a motion to approve the award of the NEPA um review assistance completion uh to Pinion? Pinion Consulting, sorry, Pinion Environmental, sorry, I just closed out this.
So.
Second, great.
Nothing more for me?
Uh, for me, uh, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye, aye, great, that was approved, thank you for working that through. And again, that's great that that is covered, that, yeah, that they, you know, understand the need to work because that, yeah, that stuff gets really confusing, really fast.
Yeah, it's frustrating when they require, they give you the money and then they require all the additional.
Yeah. Okay, um, on to number five, a discussion in consideration of a bid award for the design and construction of our coroner's facility, Tim.
Sure, actually I'm going, so I'll give a quick overview and the commissioners are aware, uh. This one's the former coroner, we do not have a, like a brick and mortar uh site for the coroner's facility. Uh, so we did a bid, uh, was not to exceed amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to construct a coroner's facility. That will be down at the Southern Fire Station where uh Community Planning and Development has done the. Review on the well down there and the subject system down there, so we can add it to that, we've worked with the state on adding to the well there. We've worked with the, uh, spoken with the fire chief on that and then, uh, posted the bids for that, um, and Ian has reviewed them and will give you the. Uh, the two, right, those groups.
Um, we, we, we received three proposals.
Three, okay.
Um, uh, but in, in from all from, uh, I think very capable companies, however one. Um, exceeded, um, and with a bid coming in of one point two to one point five million. Uh, that was Mountain Town, um, Constructors out of Southern County, um, so we eliminated them based on um their budget. So we have two that are very much um in neck, in neck with one ano- one another. Um, the first is Ellen Kirsting, um, as we know, they were our um contractor for the fire station, they came in and got the project over the finish line. And, um, so they have provided already a schematic on, um, a very thoughtful facility of about eleven hundred square feet. Um, in speaking with all of the different interested parties, we, um, let them know that secondary trauma is something that we wanna be very cognizant of. And so these all have, um, attached garages, um, so that their transport can happen indoors and thoughtful of, um, just site orientation. Um, so that, that we're being really mindful of those kind of things. Um, so their timeline, um, within their proposal is very aggressive, um, being done by the end of the year. However, in, um, Steph reached out and talked to them because we think this might be a little overly ambitious. Um, uh, however, they would look to try to achieve a facility by the end of the year. I honestly think more realistic in talking to Lon Kirsting, the owner of the company. Um, a more realistic would probably be early summer, um, to mid-June to be able to get the facility, um, ready for occupancy. And so their bid has come in at six hundred and thirty-three, five sixty-nine, forty, and forty-seven cents. Um, with, which includes, um, a two and a half percent contingency, um, the bid that they have provided us is good for thirty days. And, um, again, recognizing that they've also provided a site plan, so I'm happy to share, um, a couple of their documents with you. But I'll go side by side with the other contender, um. They obviously know the site, have worked on the site previously, so I think that that is a bonus. Um, but our next, um, probably, uh, closest contender and maybe having a little bit of an advantage as being a local contractor. And, um, design team is Shape Architecture and Downstream Construction. Downstream Construction is a local construction company, um, and so is Shape Architecture. Um, so they have partnered on this project, their timeline is a little bit longer of having occupancy of the facility. Um, by, um, October twenty twenty-five, and however their bid is about, I'm sorry.
Twenty-six? Twenty-six?
No.
Oh, twenty-five, no, twenty-five, yeah.
October twenty twenty-five, um, their bid, um, is fifty thousand, just a little over fifty thousand dollars cheaper. Uh, at five hundred and eighty-three thousand forty dollars. However, um, they do, they have not provided a schematic yet, they are proposing around a thousand square foot facility as well with an attached garage. Um, so design-wise, I anticipate that they're gonna be about the same. Um, we've got about a fifty thousand dollar difference between, um, the two and the timeline. Um, Kirsting, uh, firm does believe that they can maybe get occupancy a little bit sooner than, um, downstream and shape. Um, but really, they're very much neck and neck. So if staff was to make a recommendation, we would, um, ask you if you consider, um, maybe the, um, uh, advantage of a local contractor and, um, business. So, in downstream and, um, shape, they both have, um, lots of examples of, uh, facilities and, uh, construction projects within. Like the Lake County, um, and so, I can't just, so if you wanna just pick them. Um, particularly, I don't think you necessarily wanna look at all of their credentials, I think you're pretty aware. But here is kind of a rendering site plan, and then after that are some other design documents that you wanna look at. They didn't, they haven't included a schematic yet, um, so, um. Ellen Kirsting has provided a little bit more site planning, um, at, at least initial thoughts of, um, the layout of the facility. And, um, we don't quite have that yet, um, um, and downstream.
Let me see that, sorry.
They, um, just downstream, um, within their discussion, maybe looking more at a single facility. And, uh, Kirsting is looking at the possibility of either a panelized or maybe even, um, uh, pre-manufactured. And so that probably aids in the timeline.
And they both, is this garage attached, they're both having?
They're, they both were required through the RFP to have an attached garage.
Yeah.
Um, Ellen Kirsting has a, a hallway, um, that attaches then, um, they went into a little more detail into their design and proposal. And those are elements to come from, um, Shape's design team and just making sure that, you know, they get real specific in what our needs are. So, um, the proposal that came in, um, from Ellen Kirsting went ahead and, and, um, did a kind of a schematic of a proposed layout.
Did you or anyone, do you do any reference checks?
Um, so the reference checks that we have, of course, I think that Lake County, um, I did speak to, um, the, uh, work that was done on the fire station. I do know that we still have some outstanding punch list items, um, that need to be addressed. Um, but also recognizing that they came in on the fire station, um, project and, um, kind of took over a project that was not going in the right direction. So we, we are being in, got into account, they also did, um, within their, um, uh, packet, they've done the, um, stage at the Ice Palace Park. Um, they've done, um, the Hudson, um, project, and they've done, um, the airport hangar. So the feedback from those projects have all been positive. Um, and then from downstream and shape, um, I, you know, looking at, um, the projects that they have done in the community, those have. Really had good results and we did get good feedback on the projects. I would say, reference-wise, they are pretty equal in those directions.
I'll. I don't wanna supersede other references, but like my experience with Ellen Kirsting on the fire, I mean, the fact they still have outstanding punch list items, it was hard to keep them on track. I'll leave it at that. I share your sense that their initial timeline is unrealistically ambitious.
Um, yeah, cuz we, well, we talked about like something like a modular, like we have other works and so it sounds like. They're still working out what exactly that might look like, depending on who gets awarded bid, because we don't.
Right, and I, I think Ellen Kirsting would go with a, um, either a SIP, like a panelized, that they would actually construct, so with the state. Um, when you, in doing a mo- a modular construction on a occupancy of this type, like residential, um, that approval process is. Um, and, and inspection process is still a little different than when you're doing this type of occupancy of a structure. So you have to send your plans into the state on that manufactured piece, even though it's got some acceleration to it. It still has to go through, um, the plan and, and construction, actually that review of the state, because it's more of a specialized manufacturing product. So there is some additional time, they are specifically talking about, uh, whatever the outcome would be, would be something that has degree of pre-manufactured aspect to it.
And I'll just say, I mean, I know Ellen Kirsting on the residential side of the fire stations, fire station, it was sort of that, a little bit of hybrid, like each wall section came in framed flat. So it wasn't like full modular or prefab or whatever the right word is, but it, but it was.
Panalyzed.
Panalyzed in, you know, in, I think their beauty.
Yes.
You know, indoor facility and then trucked up, um, so.
My question's gonna be if either of these, who has had had any experience with this type of specialized, um, facility? Just because of the issue we did run into with the fire station, I mean, we were in contact and stuff like that.
Yeah.
So I don't think, um, neither one of them have ever done a work for this facility.
But just as, for this facility, the, the scope of it was, um, an office, a shower, um, a room for the cooler, with that garage connection. It's incredibly common space to meet with folks and then an evidence, uh, lot, so it's not, uh, it's not a medical examiner's facility.
Some evidence storage, yeah.
Right, great, right, good. Um, and yeah, that was all of, um, did speak with, um, all of the teams to, you know, give them that direction. Um, that it was not going to be doing any kind of medical examination, that we needed a public bathroom, we needed a separate staff, uh, bathroom with a shower facility. Meeting room, the refrigeration, and then certainly very cognizant of, um, uh, secondary trauma and, and organizational thing.
In, looking at the, the floor plan for, um.
Ellen Kirsting.
Yeah, not, not those guys, they're, not the downstream, not good, but they have a work room, but this facility's gonna need a locker room. For, for male and female employees. Due, due to the nature of this work, people are gonna need a space where they can change uniforms, change clothes and things like that, and so. Um, whichever company we decide on, that, that, there needs to be a locker room.
There could be something expanded into the, um, the bathroom space to have a separate room.
Yeah. The shower is gonna need.
That would happen, but the shower is included, yeah.
Yeah, I see the shower, but, yeah, they need to.
Build it more longer, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And those are certainly specifications that we can absolutely modify, I think that's a minor.
Work with the coroner to figure out exactly.
Yeah.
The interior, but yeah, because the other thing to, so when you start talking locker, I also thought about the, someone that can lock up stuff that they take from, it was, it's.
And that helps, that, uh, that helps everybody.
Yeah, yeah, the ventilation, yeah.
That's true, that's true.
Yeah, that has a security issue on that.
Exploration.
And it will have to have a really, pretty beefed up ventilation, H back system too.
I think that, so the units that they, they provided, um, are directly from a manufacturer that provides those units, their, um, uh, manufactured. Um, product that they would, um, actually purchase and then installs the manufacturer specs for, um, the actual refrigeration and, um. And aspects like that, so there are, um, manufacturer best practices through the manufactured, um, products that they would receive for those types of units.
And then, uh, you know, another question to me is, is are there any kind of like state standards or requirements around biohazard ventilation and things like that? Um, with these, with these types of facilities?
So, um, both of them you will see have mechanical, electrical and plumbing, um, uh, expertise that they will bring in to help design those elements. Um, which they will be looking for those type of standards. Also, um, we did, we did look into that, a lot of it is around refrigeration. As far as actual biohazards like containment from any kind of drain systems, my understanding is that there would be no processing or medical examinations. We don't have to worry about, um, like containment of biohazards from, from plumbing or from drainage. So we didn't look at any type of containment or make that a requirement. Um, the showering for staff, um, would not, um, in our investigation and discussion, we were not, um, suggesting that we would need any kind of containment from the subject system. To be able to remove those kind of hazards, so we haven't, this does not include any type of plumbing, um, containment for drainage for biohazards.
And then, um, is there any kind of a backup power system out there for the, for the fire station that could accommodate this structure too?
There is, um, a backup generator, um, for the facility and we can certainly, um, ensure that there would be backup power for the refrigeration. But there is currently, um, backup power for the fire station.
Okay.
Great questions.
Um, I'm, I'm comfortable.
Yeah.
Going with the staff's recommendation. What do you both feel? Shape Architecture?
Yeah. Yep, yes.
Uh, great, and yeah, I mean, you guys, I mean, it'll, as you move through the process again on that fine tuning the design and working with the coroner and figuring out and remembering that it's not that medical examiner. Might not be that much activity happening in there before the, the students are transported elsewhere, um, but, okay. Um, I move to award the bid, and, sorry, these were, you did say the three. Uh, Mountain Town Contractors, Ellen Kirsting, and Shape Architecture and Downstream Construction, okay. Um, I'll move to award the bid for the construction of the coroner's facilities, uh, to Shape Architecture and Downstream Construction.
Second I'm on shoot, and maybe just noted it's design and construction, so.
Okay, okay, design and construction.
Uh, as, as posted, so, cool, okay, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you for letting me do that, everyone. That will be great to get that done.
Yes.
Um, okay, now, um, next agenda item, agenda item is going into executive session, um, so I'll just, uh, read this out as posted. Um, so, uh, do you consider the potential purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer or sale of property? Or an intergovernmental agreement with Lake County School District pursuant to CRS, uh, section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four A? And to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations and or instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E? Uh, and, and, uh, to hold a conference with the county attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions related to the potential purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer or sale of property. For an intergovernmental agreement with Lake County School District pursuant to CRS section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four D.
Uh, I'll move to go to executive session for those, uh.
Stated purposes.
Stated purposes, thank you.
Second motion.
Great. Any further discussion or clarification, Chris, did we do that all right or Tracy? Uh great.
You'll be joined by the county manager and deputy county manager.
Oh, thank you, sir.
County attorney and deputy county attorney.
Great, okay, thank you.
And then is there, and nobody, nobody else online would be joining us, okay?
Uh no.
Okay, great, um call for the vote on that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great.
About twelve eleven?
Oh, sorry, thanks, yeah.
You're going to.
Um and then folks online, we will be going into an executive session, um probably last about an hour. If you want to rejoin, you can do so then, um but for now, we're going to mute the audio and the video and stop the recording.
Voice transcript can be a little scary in the world. Yeah, okay, uh one twenty five P M, uh look for a motion to come out of executive session?
So moves?
Second. Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, uh one twenty five, we are out of executive session, um.
For the record, no decisions were made during um executive session and the conversation is subject to attorney client privilege. So the recording is made for the executive session.
Sir, do you wanna dive into the language?
Sure. Yeah, you wanna take a stab at it?
Yeah.
Alright, um uh I'll make a motion to direct staff uh to draft a letter of intent or interest, Chris?
Intent.
Intent uh regarding our conversations in executive session related to school district vacant land identified by the school district and the potential to cover appraisal costs of specific parcels of interest if needed.
Okay.
Moving back over to.
Second motion, great. Another comment or clarification that sounded good to me from my notes? Call for vote?
Aye.
Aye, aye, great. Um anything else, is that clear for staff? Great. Okay, um. Thank you, everyone. Um so I think now we're moving on to number seven, discussion of next steps on courthouse renovations uh for detention, law enforcement and court security. And says led by us, always a danger.
Always a dangerous thing. Uh so I can lay a a framework for the commissioners right over the past uh twenty five years, this has been a discussion in this community. Um but where we are at now with uh previous guidance given to the uh given to staff um is working on current courthouse renovations for detention, law enforcement and court security. Um of course, that you know has some other ancillary impacts around the rest of the building, like upgrading the nineteen original nineteen fifty five windows, that kind of thing. Um so where staff is at now is there are um we have been working with uh Stifel Public Finance on the certificate of participation process. Um the you know, that will require a resolution by the board of county commissioners um to resolve for us to to go after a certain amount of funding to borrow for the project. We've worked on a project cost um either fifteen and a half or sixteen million, the board needs to firm that up, but it would be um a uh borrowing ten million dollars and we have three and a half million dollars in congressionally directed spending and then a general fund contribution of two or two and a half million dollars to get to fifteen and a half or sixteen million dollar project cost. Uh we have worked with DPM or Dyna to name it per to name it program management, project management, uh who has been our owner's rep uh for the justice center and has continued to work with us with FCI Constructors to get cost estimates for hard construction. And with Jim McLaren, who is a law enforcement um um design and architect expert, focuses on law enforcement spaces and detentions. And then also with Riley Johnson Architecture um from previous designs for twenty five years, they've worked with the county on this project. Um and then previous designs of the justice center and then they've also worked on some preliminary sketch designs for it to be done at this facility. Um so if the board would like, we can proceed with a special meeting next week, um twenty fourth at one P M. But we could do the resolution for the certificate of participation then, um move forward with this and all of the the project costs and everything in there. We will have bids uh from Jim McLaren uh on how to upgrade our current detentions area, um including you know Sally Port to the uh safety of the to the public and the uh in law enforcement officials. Um elevator, yeah, uh that is up for debate at the moment, uh Sheriff Speckman doesn't like the idea of an elevator. However, um you know, if detention remains on this floor, we still have to get up to court, we also have to get people from the parking lot to this floor. If detentions is moved to the basement floor, it's a little easier, but you still have to get to court on the third floor. Um so part of that will come from Jim McLaren's work on what that looks like if there is a secured elevator uh for this building uh for inmate transport.
I mean, we had one in, we had one in the couple elevators in Clark County. Clark County jail in Las Vegas, two thousand five hundred inmates in it and there was no issue at all.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I mean, there was one in the Monroe design too, cause of that step in elevation, I mean.
Right, yeah, and it's actually if you've got if you've got inmates that are combative or or you know whatever, it's a lot easier working with an elevator than trying to drag them up and downstairs. Safer, there's less chance of injury and all that, so.
And I think and that that will come out in the the design um process, we have made it, Lauren and I have made it abundantly clear to all of the vendors working on this that the county commissioner's priority is upgrading detentions and having five or six holding cells on jail.
And a Sally Port.
And a Sally Port, um court security uh upstairs. And then you know, there are other options for underfunded uh courthouse funding throughout the state. Either courts, the judicial district will continue to pressure Lake County on the designer for things upstairs. Um we're not discounting the safety of the judges uh and court officials up there, I think there are ways we can do it. It is not a complete renovation or remodel of the third floor, but you know, will come with some security enhancement, I T enhancements, those kinds of things. Obviously, it will not be what everyone wants, but we are living within what Lake County government's means are and how to achieve it uh and meet the mandates that the state has imposed on us, are you listening?
No.
Anything?
I ju- I wonder, was was part of the conversation about the elevator also an alternative? Or was the elevator indoor stairway an alternative exit for judges and courts folks, not just?
Um the conversations I recall for well, it's a well, there's a couple elevator conversations, um our main elevators aging, um not ADA compliant. So that is no consideration, but for what we focused on for this project has been um moving, moving of inmates.
Inmates, okay.
And what we can do with this project as well um is creating similar to like the website accessibility standards, we can create an ADA accessibility plan. That is like a five to ten year long plan showing you know, the incremental steps that we are making to make our building more accessible to the public, so. And perhaps it's remodeling the ba- the bathrooms, there's more urinals, it's a single seater, the those kind of things, right, to to make the building more compliant. One piece of that will be the elevator, which is in the center of the building, um so any new elevator for the public and for staff to be ADA compliant, this building will probably need to be on the outside somewhere, but that can be part of the ADA compliant plan as we work on upgrades to this facility.
Okay. And then and then part of the detentions is is it still like kind of the three options or are we not limiting or we uh re- renovation in the exact footprint?
Mm-hmm.
Expansion of into parking lots, indoor?
No, no, no expansion, the only the only expansion would be the Sally Port, um anything, so that would be the only kind of expansion
Sally Port. Oh.
Is that Sally Port, the secure area to transfer inmates.
Okay, existing footprint or s- lower floor?
Yeah.
Or Sally Port something or other, okay, but there's always a possibility.
Maybe some external elevator problems, if that just has to be the way it's done, but no, no wholesale change of the footprint or exterior walls.
Yeah. Right, right.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Um.
Okay, I mean, yeah, I do just obviously, so we would. It's like where I took the scenario. We have to reach back out to bond council, we have just been working with Stifel Public Finance right now, but it's, but we also need to work with our bond council on the issuance of that.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Um I mean, Dan too, so I mean, for me, like, I definitely comfortable like getting these decisions lined up for the twenty fourth you know, that afternoon session that we had posted, I think um I I've a question around sort of who's on the architecture team and then a question around like what the right number is for the certificate, you know, for the COP? Um certificate of participation, cause I just hundred percent agree that detention comes first, I just, I guess I just have, not concerns, but I just think just the reality of it is, is like we're gonna need to think real carefully about what that secure detainee transport up is and sort of meshing with court security, I think I could just see like really quickly, we're gonna get into some sort of like building envelope improvements, like some of the other sort of facility maintenance stuff, you know, oh code is we have to have air handling in a floor we didn't have it in before, or I just I just wonder if that conservative number on the C O P is really gonna be enough.
Yeah, uh that is, that is a fair and great question, one that I've thought um a lot about, um so both R J A and Jim McLaren do have G S G's uh master plan of this facility that was done last year with all of those recommendations.
Yeah.
Uh Jim McLaren has provided some more, you know, thoughtful or innovative ways we can achieve some of those things, um. I think part of, part of what the C O P is um is achieving the funding for this and setting a strict construction budget that teams have to work within.
Yeah.
And they that it is what it is and we have to make that do. And part of that as well is the the debt payment for the C O P is what the county government can afford and it doesn't inhibit county commissioners from other community priorities uh in needs and and I I agree with you, like there 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 most certainly will be things that come up of like and I think there will be trade offs during this project design and that, perhaps we go from two holding cells to four and it's not the six, um that is kind of the the sweet spot number um that we would like, but um it's what we can do within within our budget.
Yeah, I did, well, I I just, I mean, I, I don't know, I just think like, you know, even like underfunded courts is a reimbursement brand, like you know, there's some upfront costs.
Yeah. Yeah.
Like you know, DOLA grants a reimbursement, like there's just some upfront money and I I mean, yes, of course, we will make the trade offs of our decisions we have to make. I just feel like when major construction is happening and the building is disrupted to like not do like the roof and the windows while we temporarily, you know, uh move people out of the building, this seems just
Seems weird.
Yeah, yeah, seems a little, I I want to say silly, we put a lot of effort into this, like we're thinking this through, but it's just, I don't know, like, yeah.
I would like to.
Yeah.
I mean, I was gonna ask if you were, whether you're getting at not wanting to do those things, cause if we're going to invest in that in this building, I would like to do those things.
No, I would like to do that, I I I am comfortable exploring a higher C O P number so that we don't have to come back.
Yeah.
Change back.
Well, let's not forget those two, I mean, there are different ways that of which we can meet some of our other funding funds.
Yeah. Yeah.
The allocations to our other funds in land as an asset, we don't have to put that cash there this, you know?
Yeah.
And so we might be able to free up a little bit more money if we're more creative in meeting or complying with um those other allocations.
Yeah. Yeah, well, also, I mean, you know, with the three of us were in the meeting yesterday with some of the state folks about, you know, there's just like a ton of money for like building envelope efficiency stuff like, you know, for some of the H vac systems, you know, so I think there's grant opportunities in direction of a lot of our properties, I still, I
Windows.
Again, I would just hate for us to like carve things out that we know need to be done, you know, and sort of messily phase our projects, feels like we when when you're tearing into a third of the building, getting some other, at least trying to get some other stuff done at the same time.
Fair.
Makes a ton of stuff, it makes sense.
Um well, then we can price out a ten, twelve and fifteen million dollars C O P and then if you're still comfortable with a two or two and a half million dollar general fund contribution, congressionally directed spending,
I mean, yeah.
we can start teeing up, um you know, which we have been with the the twenty five budget, right, like looking at DOLA, underfunded courts, all of that, of course, underfunded courts, what's a plan, which is great, we'll flex that on next year when we we have the plan and the construction's ongoing. Um you know, when we did renovate the two holding cells that we have now, you know, that can, that was done while we were working in the building and at the request of the courts, we did it at night, um so those were completed, so um perhaps there's a way whilst whilst some of that is happening that, you know, operations can happen.
Yeah.
Obviously, window replacements need to happen during summer months, um in boilerworks, we couldn't be done during winter. Uh so.
That's that one B.
Yeah, uh but we can explore those, I just, I think for for the intent, if the board still intends to move forward on next week uh I maybe we can draft a resolution.
I think those price points, for me, those price points seem like a good range, I wasn't suggesting twenty or twenty five million, like going, you know, the whole point of this exercise has been to not get into that much. Um but I think just a little bit more cushion for the projects.
It's always gonna be on the top.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You can't, you can't predict all of them.
Yeah.
Um okay, so maybe the the last two questions, do you want, do you want to move forward next week?
Oh, okay. I think that would be good to keep things moving if our goal is like a ninety day, you know, roughish for the C O P
Yeah.
stuff to work through, so that would be great, just to get that rolling. Um.
We have, we have next week we won't have numbers, next week we will, we will be pulling trigger, we won't have numbers on on.
Think though. Think they'll estimate it, but you don't really know the numbers until you actually go out to try to sell the C O Ps.
Okay. Right.
Right.
And the design, you're looking for that?
Design, so it'll be, it'll, okay, there'll probably be two um
Trigger.
two, two or three agenda items that we've proven to decide on, which is I propose moving forward with uh Jim McLaren's work, uh and that on uh detention design and upgrades, um. So detention, design detentions, the resolution for the C O P, well, maybe so then maybe the second one would be then determining the C O P amount, going through that so everybody can see it, who tunes in and understands who what that decision point is, and that doing a resolution that has a set C O P amount to it and the estimated uh repayment costs and directing staff to work on that one.
We just reached out to bond council, there's nothing clear. Yeah, so. And and D P M and F C I's contracts can be extended or?
I think we we can extend, we can extend and.
What by the scope?
Do the courthouse pieces with that extension?
Findify those. Yeah, so I think D P Ms will be the easiest to to keep them on, um you know, F C I uh will probably, will need to get that design work done. And there will be, need to be um moving on with like an actual architect of record. And then that's where you. And then that's where you can get the cost.
In addition to Jim, so Jim would become sort of like a consultant or something or a partner.
Yeah, so Jim would be. Sir, yeah, so we would use Jim for his expertise, but also to reduce the cost of the architect of record, so if you remember when we did the.
Yeah.
Community justice center, um, one, right, all of that, the, the pre-work, the schematic designs, all of that kind of stuff, he will get done. And then draft the RFP for us that is super specific and keeping the architects on track, which is. Wildly hard to do sometimes, um, so then having that, um, so that will reduce actually the cost of the architectural fees. Um. Uh, and then him kind of like really, really guiding like those architects on like what exactly needs to be done, and then we can get the, the hard construction costs.
Yeah.
And then the CUTAC law contract, we have to add that too.
So we still have, I don't know if they're still under engagement, I think, was it just a letter of engagement with them? Um. Gotta be a team that's about okay.
PSAs, okay, they're all pretty, I mean, I think at this point, we have reviewed the county manager's contract, so.
I'm okay.
We can move anything up if you want.
Okay. I've, I've read all this stuff, right?
Yeah.
Psychological services is.
So you're good with that, that one, I'm excited.
So, does that cover item seven for three preparation for twenty, special meeting set up on the twenty, after the twenty fourth?
Yeah.
I think so, okay.
Good.
And it looks like the CUTAC law, um, doesn't have a, a major letter renewed, doesn't have a term, a set term for it, so they just said shit on, um.
Okay.
It might be an adjustment to terms to their fees or something, is it just from twenty twenty two?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. That sounds good, so then for the twenty fourth.
It's in addition to work sessions. So we have, oh yeah, so in the morning we'll do a work session and then at one P M we'll hold the special meeting to decide on these, please.
Okay, it's a whole week away.
We're gonna have to go.
Uh, okay, uh, then we went to number eight, we're good.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, discussion and consideration of a PSA with political advocacy, Inc., Lauren.
Yeah, so this is the contract, the PSA with political advocacy, Inc., the, uh, Elizabeth Rosen, who is our lobbyist. Um, it's up to fifty thousand dollars, um, I think she should be able to meet her, uh, the G S standards commission, um. Her contract would start almost immediately, um, and she'd be able to provide us the kind of tier one, tier two initiatives. Uh, we do a weekly update with you all, she's asking multiple times when she can come up here and meet you all, um.
Sure, yeah.
Um, I'll move to approve the professional services agreement with political advocacy, Inc.
Second motion, great.
Move for the discussion, please.
Great, call for vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, thanks for moving that along. Um, number nine, discussion and consideration of a professional services agreement with Dr. Courtney Russell, Psychological Services LLC and Lake County Government under the core services program.
Yeah, so, uh, Dr. Courtney Russell, she's in, she's actually housed within our DHS building, she is a psychologist. Uh, and has worked a lot with, uh, young people in particular, uh, as you may recall, the state gives us an allocation of what we call core, it's not an acronym, it's called core funding. To specific for mental health and substance use services for child welfare referred or child welfare involved, young people. Uh, so we have already put in our core plan that you have approved, a specific number, twenty six hundred dollars, specific for mental health services, so this is just having that contract with Dr. Russell. Her office is literally across the hallway from your road and our child welfare director, so there's a lot of access points and it just kind of makes sense for us, um. To, to have those services with her.
I didn't have any questions, um.
No, mm-hmm, I'll move to approve the PSA with Dr. Courtney Russell, psychological, psychological services LLC. And Lake County Government under the core services program.
Second motion, great. See any further questions, call for vote, all right, no, no, it's good.
Aye. Sorry, sorry.
All right, okay, that is approved. Uh, number ten, discussion and consideration of a PSA with Dr. Courtney Russell, Psychological Services LLC and Lake County Government under the Child Welfare Services Program.
Yeah, so basically the same thing, it's just a different pot of money that we have access to that comes directly from the state, we get roughly. Seven hundred thousand dollars to run our child welfare program, part of that funding we can use for direct prevention services, so. So a child gets referred to us, you know, there's issues, but there's mental health related, we just use this funding to prevent them from having that welfare problem.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the PSA with Dr. Courtney Russell, Psychological Services LLC and Lake County Government under the Child Welfare Services Program.
Second motion, great. Great, call for vote.
Aye.
Aye, that is proved to, thank you, Lauren, uh, okay, um, number eleven, discussion and consideration of renewal of the county manager's contract. Um, I can just say a couple words here, so, um, this is a contract that started when we hired a county manager and went to a county manager, former government and. Um, hired and appointed, uh, Tim Bergman, so it's just, it's all of a sudden, it's been a couple of years, uh, we've had a couple amendments on that old, you know, for. Current, but previous contract, so, um, this contract does a couple things, just, um, I think, uh, you know, has, has a couple. Uh, additions here and there, but it also incorporates the two amendments that we had done, um, over the years and into an actual sort of revised, um. Uh, contract, so this is, again, just to be clear, this is a, a, to renew the contract, but it's a revised contract, not an amendment to the current one. Um, and I think where we're at, I think the V O C C, the three commissioners are, are comfortable with the content of it, but this would be a motion to approve. That revised contract pending legal review, uh, I apologize for taking a little bit of time, but I think we do need another round, um, with county legal and also. Give Bergman a chance to fully review it too, since it is a contract. Um, so again, so I think the motion would be to, um, to approve that revised contract, uh, county manager's contract, uh, pending legal review.
Do we want to include in, on any suggestions that come back from Tim?
I, I mean, I think if, if there are, you know, substantive issues, then of course we'll come, 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 come back to the board with those.
Yeah, and yeah, I don't think there are huge changes other than incorporating like expectation, further. Outlining expectations and like directives between the board and the manager and the board's activities.
Yeah, I can, I mean, I think that the, the original contract was perhaps a little light on the details of how annual performance review would work, it was a new position, we just didn't have that, um. We didn't know how that should work, so I think it, uh, um, yeah, elaborates on that, on that process as well as, again, just, I think, some more technical updates on dates and. Some other provisions, and I think also, I think over the last couple of years, we have a much stronger human resources department than we did, certainly when I started, so I think we have. More of an internal process for all staff on annual performance reviews to rely on or learn from, so it's just trying to catch us up to where we are. So, yeah, but I think to, to your point, Sarah, I mean, if there are substantive issues that arise that we didn't catch, uh, to date, then of course it should come back to the three of us.
Okay. All right, I'll move to approve the renewal, uh, and revision of the county manager's contract pending final legal review.
Second motion, great. Are there?
Nothing, very well, thank you.
Okay, call for vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, that is approved, pending legal review. Okay, okay, how we will carry on.
Please. Stay till the beginning.
Yeah. Um, okay, I think, uh, we're, we're, we're gonna make it, everyone, um, number twelve, September county manager's report. Um, Tim, are you good on that, or you wanna, we could do the calendar review first if you want.
Yeah. Um, yes, excited to announce we have made an offer and they have accepted for the new parks racketed open space director, uh, he will be moving here from Cordoba, Alaska with his wife. Uh, he has decades of experience in recreation and open space, uh, in three different countries, uh, New Zealand, the United Kingdom and the U S. Um, a lot of great experience that made him really appealing with tight budgets, public engagement, the asset management, cost recovery, you know, team and individual management. A lot of experience with building budgets, managing and applying for grants, um, a lot of different types of recreation and open space programming and then. Building and evaluating programming, so super stoked to have him come and join us, um. Fun fact about Cordoba, Alaska, they have the same year make model of the pool that we have. Um, they just went through their first line of replacement project, so he, uh, is well aware of Lake County's pool issue.
And he still came.
As you can see, yeah, yeah.
Carmen's Blood Hill's a big town, did you, is Cordova's tiny?
Yes, yeah, yeah, um, and he has worked, he's worked, yeah, Cordoba's very, very small, uh, he's worked in huge municipalities as recreation director. Um, so he's, he comes with a lot of experience and it's really exciting to have him. Um, rather, uh, fun or exciting things, so this week is, last week was the band books week, uh, you know, awareness and celebration, so. This Thursday at Fray's, starting at five thirty, we will have Erica L. Sanchez, who is the band book author of I Am Not Your Perfect Mexican Daughter. This is the third year in a row that, uh, Lake County Public Library has put this on and brought, um, authors who have been challenged or banned across our country, so it's exciting. Um, to have her, uh, to have Ms. Sanchez come, it'll be a good event, they're always fun, um, the authors are very impactful, talking about their, um. You know, having their work being banned in America, just, just fascinating, um. On a bit more somber note, a very somber note, uh, Desiree's funeral and burial will be this Friday. And one idea that Lauren and I had, uh, that we'd like to flow to the commissioners, um, would be creating a memorial scholarship in her name. Um, it could be hosted at the Lake County Community Fund, um, and we were thinking of a scholarship for Lake County students or even residents who would. Want to go, uh, into social services, so.
Hmm.
Public health, uh, social work, all that kind of stuff, so.
Hmm.
Um, we can have a more formal proposal for, uh, for the commissioners, but we would like, uh, for you guys to consider that, uh, going into the twenty twenty five budget.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
Um, other updates, so we are working, um, on Verro installation for the county courthouse in the annex, that should hopefully happen either this week or next week, scheduling with their teams. Um, we will need to get, uh, to get the entire county onto Verro, um, you know, at some point, we do want to get goal and public health and human services on there. I don't think they're across the highway yet, but they're still working on that, so that's, that's a future, future, uh, phase of that, but, so that will be happening soon. Um, public health, so we've just discussed this in the ba, in the past, the tobacco retail licensing ordinance, uh, language, so. City and county teams have been meeting, um, on what that language looks like, uh, how to get the ordinance done on a timeline, so it is effective January first. Uh, Kelsey Maxi will be coming, uh, to the work session next week in the morning, just to give you a, a broader update on that and get feedback from the board on that. Um, we have two new mamas, as you know, Julia Johansson, our director, uh, had her baby, um. And then Cindy Pereira Escalera also had, uh, a baby boy, um, so they, they are short staffed. Uh, with two folks out on maternity leave, uh, until November, um, but DHS team is providing support. Um, for front desk coverage and, and helping in, in ways, uh, some admin things they can do. Uh, immunizations for the fall will start, uh, tomorrow, um, and then flu shots are in stock, COVID shots are coming. We will be doing a, uh, clinic at the courthouse, the annex, uh, on October fifteenth, so staff, um, can have that easily done, we'll send the signups out. Excuse me, on the first. Um, they did receive a mini grant, uh, to fund a contractor to support the community health assessment, so that is what is required of public health every five years, they need to do a community health assessment, update. Impact, you know, input from the community on community health needs, uh, and then where that can go. Um. Tourism and economic development, uh, visitor center is back up and running, or is fully up and running, sorry, across the street, uh, the numbers have been solid for the summer season. Um, and it's kind of been a nice shift for them, uh, folks are coming in and asking like intentional questions about like what the Lake County, what to do. A lot of the times at the old site was, you know, stop for bathroom break and like, how do I get to Camp Hail, um, so a little more like locally directed questions, which is nice, um. And their strategic plan with the tourism panel is coming along, uh, and then Adam is partnering with Josh, uh, to get the airport rent study completed, which should be completed by the end of this month. Uh, O E M hazard mitigation plan is available for public comment until September thirtieth, um, we have a F A Q. Sheet that is in Spanish of like what is the hazard mitigation plan, um, and that, we did not translate the full draft plan into Spanish. We will translate the final draft completely into Spanish, um, but they will have, uh, two community drop in events that will have Spanish language support, so people can provide their feedback. So this Thursday from four to six, uh, at City Hall down the street, and then the twenty fourth from four to six at the Southern Fire Station. Um, Claire just completed the advanced PIO course, which was super exciting, and then, uh, Liz and Sammy will be going next week. Next week to, uh, intro PIO, I, PIO school, um, so we'll have more, more staff across the organization trained in that. And then just an update from Claire, she, she has the treasure on the E nine one one authority board, um, that budget, uh. Planning is happening, uh, those requests are coming, um, I did receive a request from the E nine one one authority to, uh, do their, um. Update, uh, the biannual update that is required, uh, to the O C C, so that'll be happening soon, so you understand the, all the things that are happening in E nine one one land. Uh, pros and goals, climate action plan, RFP bids closed on the thirteenth, uh, Jane and team are reviewing, uh, so you'll see that, uh, coming. Before you assume it's your regular, next regular meeting for that award, we did, uh, get the funding from Colorado Energy Office for the sustainability manager position. So that will be posted soon, once we tie things up with the Colorado Energy Office, that job description will be very clear. As well like the offer letter to anyone that this is a three year grant funded position, um, that may or may not. Be funded or continue to be funded, just so we're transparent and folks know that, um, we do have some RFPs out for tennis court renovation. And doming of community field, just so we can get those like quotes and actually have like a hard idea, a number of, for the twenty twenty five budget, should the commissioners want to move for that. Forward with that for those, uh, improvements. Turf is still in progress, um, probably saw that, you probably see bundles of it all around town, they're at local businesses, um. Yeah, it's at the Ale Yak, so if you want to go and play cornhole there, the new business there, um, it's there, and then there are bundles over there, did you get some? Uh-huh, you better, better, yeah.
It's gone.
They're, they're, they're supposedly working.
Okay, um, the, uh, throwback for, uh, Jeff and Sarah, maybe for Sarah, the Wayfair signage for Dutch Henry in the airport.
Oh, boy.
Have been picked up. It will be installed.
Wow.
Four years later.
In our lifetime.
In our lifetime, um, I'm fascinating project, but we are closing it out, um, and it is happening. Uh, rack is in their fall seasoning, uh, programs, they have eight programs running for all different ages, um, you know, they'll start changing things up with new programming, you know, as things wrap up and go on. Uh, the goal, uh, Brian crushed it this year for Rocky's Rock, which I think you all know, um, but he's continuing to doing grade programming with the school district for, uh, K through five and the Cloud City High School students. Um, and they are continuing to work on, uh, grants and grant reporting for fall programming and all of that. Um, and, you know, uh, Carrie Quinlan, who is helping with finance for, uh, GOL, uh, did leave, but we did figure out a way to post a development specialist that will support GOL, but it will also like support recreation as well, right? So, there's a lot of like similar funding pots and what can be done for, uh, both programmatic areas as we continue to work on integration. Um, October twelfth will be Dia de la Muerte's, uh, pumpkin patch, last year we had four hundred and fifteen people go. Um, so, uh, this year will probably be bigger as well, especially since they're bringing a mariachi, um, which is pretty sweet. Um, I think you have had a chance to meet Laura, maybe now, but Laura is our new DHS Director. Um, she does come, she comes from us from the Springs, uh, and was there, uh, at the area agency on aging, so lots of, uh, good experience for DHS. Uh, the Economic Security Unit, uh, has announced a complete rebranding and reorientation initiative. Um, took a bit of a hit with, uh, Desiree, but, uh, they're continuing to work through that, um, but being much more community-driven, uh, in the community, working with nonprofit partners, being at nonprofit partners organizations, uh, being closer to that, um, having a little more, uh, linguistically, um, where, uh, available, uh, to folks. Um, that way, they did present this to all the nonprofit partners, they are very excited about this, and I'm very happy that all of this work is happening, did you not touch on that at all? Okay, okay, um. Some more hip hop grants, which I think you guys are aware of, because we, uh, you guys approved those. And then, um, Wraparound, uh, is continuing to rocket, and they're being, you know, more engaged in the community as well, just at, having a presence at different areas, so folks know more about it, so it's not just something that happens at school. Um, so people have more, a lot about it. Um, for new hires and the start dates, um, Melissa Kendrick is our new Deputy Director at Community Planning and Development. She brings a lot of experience, both in the public sector for working for various government agencies, um, and in, obviously, in the private sectors, being a private planner. Um, but we have worked and agreed on a, um, conflict of interest policy. Obviously, she works on a lot of things, or has worked on a lot of things in the county. She has wound down her practice and signed NDAs with all active, uh, applications that she's working on. She will not work in, on any of those at all, um, as they come through CPD. Um, Sebastian transitioned from the Assessor's Office, Office to Operations, and he's now our IT Specialist, has been very helpful. I think he'll, and then you'll see a, uh, familiar face back here, Andrea's joined the Clerk and Recorder's Office, um, so it's nice to see her again. Um, continuing on, uh, so for benefits, uh, increase, you know, we had estimated a twelve percent increase in our benefits, it actually came in at eleven percent, a little bit cheaper, um, for next year's, uh, health insurance costs. Um, Public Works, um, we'll start with the easier one. So, the paving in Silver Hills is, uh, being completed this week, so thanks to the City of Ludville, they, they loaned us one driver. Um, we are a little short-staffed at Public Works and Roden Bridge, but having that extra driver was very helpful to get the work completed. Uh, Parkville, uh, did their upgrades and fixes that they needed to do, sanitation came in as well and did some things, so that whole section should be better, um, we did ask Excel multiple times, but if they come back and rip it up next year, we'll, we'll have some words, um, but I don't think they, I don't think they will. Um, the kickoff meeting for DJ and A, uh, y'all should have the calendar invite for it. I know Commissioner Fiedler and Commissioner Edwards can't make it, but, uh, Commissioner Mudge, if you wanna join us, that is for the, uh, transit improvements and, uh, for the gateways, it's like the CMC intersection coming into town, the alternate truck route and that. Uh, so the kickoff meeting will be very broad, uh, so that'll have sanitation, city, county, CMC, that other people as well, there's some nonprofit partners and things as well. I will reach out to, uh, Mountain View, so they are aware of it as well, um, and they can hopefully be present.
When, when, when?
Uh, it is the thirtieth.
Monday.
Okay.
Sunday the thirtieth, um, from eleven thirty to three. So, they're gonna come up, they'll probably do a drive with, um, me and Michael of all the sites, and then we'll have like, probably, you know, like that larger kickoff group meeting up at CMC.
Eleven thirty, you said?
Yep.
Sorry, okay.
Um.
Do you, yes, I don't know if you know, uh, I mean, we can talk about it, I, I, and if there's a chance for even like a short one-on-one with them, like at the end of the day?
Yes.
That would be great, I should be back.
Yes. I'm gonna, um, actually try, 'cause I'm gonna meet with Bill soon, so I'll try and have you on there.
Yeah.
Um.
I should also do, I mean, you could do a bike phone or Zoom, once they, I mean, this is, like, if they've already driven around, that's cool.
Yeah. Um. And then, as you are aware, the communications for the County Road eleven closure went out. Uh, we were a little off on our timing, which is really no one's fault, um, but we, obviously, when you post on social media and the website, it gets there before the mailers that we're sending to affected residents. I know that you all have received many phone calls today from frustrated folks, um. But just as a reminder, I mean, this project has been delayed, um, two years.
Two years.
Two years, um, we've worked extensively with the.
Sorry.
One year, yeah, um, we've worked extensively with the neighboring property owners, um, they did not wanna allow us access to their property. You know, Chris, Michael and I did kind of make the recommendation or the decision that even if we did an emergency easement access, we would be, you know, upstairs in court, and it would just be a waste of all kinds of things.
Right on, yeah.
So, we do have to close, uh, County Road eleven, um, preaching to the choir, but just so everyone knows, um, for the, for the recording, right? So, like, these were put in in the forties, the last like upgrades to that was done in the sixties. The actual culverts themselves are old boilers from the smelters here, so it is old, it is held up, it was great. It is time, uh, to upgrade them, there is no other way to do it. Yes, there is a long project completion time, the five to eight weeks. We are shooting for six weeks, but we did say that eight weeks in case things go wrong with putting in the foundations or the headers or things like that. Um.
Well, and they haven't really held up, I mean, last year or the year before, they were degrading the, the material, road base and
Uh, yes, yeah.
The soils were degrading around them, and that's very dangerous.
Right. And it, yes, it is.
Given Albert, Mount Albert Power Plant's, um, status and
It degraded it even further.
flows, and I mean, this is kind of all part of that alluvial, uh, improvement and fisheries improvement,
Yeah.
but infrastructure, um, bolstering for.
Yes. Yes, it is nice for the fish, but it's also essential for human life.
Uh-huh.
Um, and safety. Um, it, yeah, um, so this is, you know, a partnership through the Arkansas River Watershed Collaborative, uh, and the Forest Service, um, helping us with this project, we have worked extensively with the Bureau of Reclamation and Colorado Parks and Wildlife as well, about the flows down Lake Ford Creek, uh, during October, uh, despite folks' perceptions. Um, the reason we're doing the project now is not because of tourists, but it is because of the river flows. Um, this is when the flows are the lowest in Lake Ford Creek, um, and when we can get the work done. Um, last year, when we had it initially scheduled, was for the, it was for the beginning of September, so it, are we, you know, we're behind a little bit, but it is because the flows are the lowest. Um, why are we, you know, the detour route we are doing, um, Roden Bridge will go out next week and grade the detour, and we will maintain the detour the entire time that it is used as a detour. Um, you know, so if it does snow, yes, we're gonna plow that, um, we'll make sure that residents have access, um, to be able to be in and out. We've worked very closely with E nine one one and all first responders, they are where they should be driving the route with Michael next week, so they can go on a tour, they can show their teams exactly where to go, so things like that, we have managed that. Um. Like I said, yeah, the detour will be made, why don't use County Road forty-four? Um, the bridge on County Road forty-four is very narrow, and also very old, and not great for increased traffic. So, the deto- detour route that was chosen was in one that we can maintain and make sure that it is passable for vehicles and done all of that, like, we're not, we're not, uh, ignorant to the fact of the way that that detour route can get, but we are going to maintain it and upgrade it so that it can be used for traffic. Uh, for the business, uh, out there, uh, ACA gravel, they didn't have any qualms with it as well either. Um, they know that it needs to happen, um, so, there's that. Um, you all have the press release and the FAQ. Uh, Sammy's been doing great, ton updating things for residents out there, I know we've all had phone calls from residents today, which, we'll all go back to our offices after this and return those phone calls, um, but it has to happen. There is, unfortunately, there is no good time to do this, um, and there is no easy way to do this. Um, any questions on that?
I have been asked by a couple of residents for the names and contact information of the adjacent landowners, I have not done that.
They can look on the Lake County Assessor's website, and they can see the property owners who are on either side of the bridge, and panic addresses are available there.
That is also what I told you. Excellent, okay.
Been a long conversation.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Um, uh, and then, so this will be the first P card exception report, uh, provided to you, since we've, um, implemented the new updated P card policy, we have purchased, uh, that's for, uh, child welfare and wraparound, uh, some phone cards for a client, Safeway gift cards for family, and some fuel cards for clients. Other than that, uh, any questions on anything that I can provide updates on that I, uh, you may not know about? Or anything else that you'd like information on?
No, that's great, I really like, I, I like having the HR, like new hires and separations, that's great, just to see, yeah, just to see.
Yeah, no, I have none, thank you so much, Tim.
Yeah.
Go on.
Okay, let us calendar.
Let's calendar. All right, let's see, are we looking at the twenty-third? Yes. Okay, all I was showing so far was the Planning Commission meeting. Um. Sure, I mean, St. St. Vincent's, um, meeting.
Board meeting.
Yeah. You think that's a board meeting? Yes. You're gonna get this again, oh.
I did, maybe you guys take it off. Sorry.
You did?
No, they were on my calendar, well, just the, the, um, invites on it.
Okay.
I mean, I never went, except when we were mad at them.
Don't, sorry.
Just a second.
Okay, so twenty-fourth, um, we have the work session at nine AM. Am I correct that this is turning into a special meeting?
Yes, we're, yeah, we'll change that, and I'll give you the language and the campus stuff for that.
Okay. Okay.
Um, but yes, the afternoon will be.
Afternoon, yeah.
The afternoon will be the special.
Okay.
Do you, I mean,
Or will there be?
I think there could still be time for some of what we were trying to get done in the afternoon work session.
I think what was on there was you, the leadership policies, but you moved that to the morning, correct?
Uh-huh.
Um, and then.
I think we could stack everything for the morning.
Okay.
Right, and then the animal shelter IGA was tentatively on there for the afternoon.
Okay. I, yeah, um, it, the work sessions depended too on if, uh, we have any communication or updates from Ski Cooper
We have this.
or commitment that they're gonna be here, so.
Yeah.
That's.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yes, I'm, it's time to chime in on that.
Yeah.
Email.
I mean, yeah, yes, thank you.
Well, we'll go over that here and all of that. Um, and the, uh, Ludville Lake County Hazard Mitigation Plan, Public Comment Opportunity, this is the one at Southern Fire Station. Um, and I don't know if I saw this on y'all's calendar this morning, um, so I don't know if you guys got an invite to this one? I did, I see it.
I think it's on there, but we can ask.
Ask Claire to.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we would move the Ski Cooper conversation to the morning?
It was already on the morning session.
It was already, mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah.
On the morning.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, will you still be doing the animal shelter?
Yeah, they got animal shelter IGA.
In the afternoon?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, okay, moving on to the twenty-fifth. Community coffee.
I have in my email like an invitation to an open house for the Colorado Workforce Center.
On the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, on the twenty-fifth, from one to three, I, I can forward that to you.
Yes, please.
Did you get that?
I did not. Um, I think there might be a amount of golf balls, maybe, at one o'clock that day, also.
Yes. Yes, there is.
That's in the library annex room, Sandra.
Oh. Jane, I'll send you that information.
Okay. Okay.
I just sent you the time and location for that.
Okay.
Um, Workforce Center, about on the twenty-fifth, perfect.
Um, is that all you guys are showing on the twenty-fifth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Great, um, and I'm not showing anything on the twenty-sixth, so far.
Yeah, nothing else, I mean.
Okay. And on, right, the twenty-seven, also I'll show this, uh, twenty-three, two weeks.
It's all out there too.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Upstations. Okay, so. We could originally just have the, uh, Ski Cooper thing on here, but, um, we've got the Tobacco Retail Ordinance Update. Um, if you feel like we are, would still be ready for this, um, then, yeah, just let me know. Invite-wise, um, if there's anything you wanna add to that, language-wise?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, just take a look at that and let me know, and I'll get invites sent out, and then I guess we can kind of get some feelers of if that's gonna work. For everybody.
Okay.
Um, discussion and review of leadership policies and practices, and discussion and review of the General Fund Research Policy.
And then discussion and review of animal shelter IGA proposed elements, or something like that.
So.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, this is in the morning.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, we were trying to add everything in the morning.
Um, well, if we can, or if you want to, uh, incorporate, um. Because this will come off here, because that one in the morning, um, so.
I mean, whatever, whatever we think for, I mean, I don't think that's gonna be super lengthy, I mean, any of these things are gonna, I mean, leadership policies, we were kind of getting into it.
Shouldn't have been final checked.
Yeah. But I mean, there's a lot in there, so I could see, I could see the discussion of leadership policies taking a long time, I think the animal IGA. I think the animal IGA, we've been around on that, I think we're in pretty good consensus on what we want. So it shouldn't be a, it'll be catching things that are missed or not phrased right, not a big lengthy just kind of, I'm just trying to think of like how much time we need to reach them.
Right, cause if we're gonna have the special at one, we'll stack too much stuff and take too much time in the morning and run too late. If you wanna do it after the special at one, the special at one, and then do that, do the animal shelter thing after, or?
I, I mean, I'm fine to keep these at, what, you know, like a two or whatever, yeah.
Can't always start late, can't start early.
Right.
Cause the special meeting for one thirty and not start until two.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I guess, I was gonna say, I guess it depends on the Ski Cooper thing. If for some reason that comes off, then you'd have plenty of time to add that to the morning session instead, and then just do the special at one.
Yeah. Let's leave it this way, split with, or and and then if we just hear that Ski Cooper is like not available and we wanna
Move that.
I still think we should have a, the conversation, yeah, of, on Ski Cooper and the Forest Service, I did connect with them last week.
We can have our discussion, yeah, yeah.
Did you?
Um, but not specifically on their availability, just on, on the topics and, yeah.
Put it out there.
Um, uh, so I'm verifying whether or not they're able to make it that morning.
So I'll leave it like this as for now?
Yeah, and then maybe just change it to one thirty.
Um, the, the special?
The, I think the special will be at one.
But change the
The works, and then the work session will be at one thirty.
Okay. And what did you want that language to say for the animal shelter?
Um, discussion and review of animal shelter revised IGA potential elements.
Do we have a draft of that?
No.
Okay.
It's super high on the to-do list.
A lot of work to do, sir. Okay, um, yeah, awesome. Should be, thank you, so, so your consent agenda.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I think the second consent agenda is pretty straightforward, you don't have any minutes this time around. Sorry if we're missing things, Tracy, but, um.
And we do, I guess I didn't take inventory, Tracy, do you know if we're waiting? I assume that if they're not on here, we're just still waiting for them to come to your office, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, um, great, uh, I'll move to approve the consent agenda now.
I will second.
No further discussion for me?
Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye, consent agenda is approved. Um, and then at two twenty-seven PM, we can adjourn, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.